So we'll call the order of this, the Monday, February 8th, 2021, meeting the Ellisville Town Council. So we'll move forward with the pledge, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marshall.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you so much for this wonderful day we're having. We thank you for the many blessings we have. We thank for the many patrons we have online tonight. We thank you for our, our school system, the ones that are represented here. We thank you so much for them. That you should be with us throughout this meeting, leading guide us in a way that would please the, let our, our councilmen and women do the things that would be good for the town. We ask that you bless and keep safe our employees and we ask that you be with us always. Ask these things, use his name. Amen.
Amen.
Sandy, roll call if you wouldn't mind.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
William Ellis? Trevor Sager?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
And now move on to approval of minutes for the work session, January 19th, 2021. We'll have to do these separately.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Prove for the regular meeting, January 25th, 2021. And I'll note that I'll abstain from this since I was not present.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Abstain.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and the payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we're going to move to a present by Dr. Jerry Sanders, our superintendent of our school corporation.
Dr. Sanders. Good, yes. Good evening, man. Thank you, Scott. I just want to thank the town council for the opportunity to join you tonight at the town council meeting. I want to begin by thanking you as a citizen of Ellisville and as a superintendent of Richland Bean Boston Community School Corporation. I want to thank you for working so hard for our community. I know the many hours that you put in and the challenges that you face, leading our community. I also want to thank the town council and all those who play a role in providing important services to our community for this special partnership that RBB has with all of you. Specifically, Mike Farmer, Jimmy Durno in the Ellisville Police Department, Mike Corman in the Ellisville Fire Department, Kevin Talati, Kip Petty, Andy Hash, and just so many more who, so many more who work with others, work with us during these challenging times. Specifically, I use the words "special partnership" because not every school corporation can say that they have a valuable partnership that, with their town, that RBB has with our town council. One of the great examples of this partnership, special partnership between RBB and the town council, is the school resource officers that we have serving in Edgewood Schools. If I had the opportunity to describe to you the highly effective school resource officer who makes a positive impact in our school and our community, I would certainly use Alec Leggio and Travis Pearman as examples. They are doing amazing work that will impact our community and our school corporation for many years to come. Tonight, I'm joined by Jamie Miller, who is our Ready Schools Coordinator, and Alicia Dirk. Alicia is a media specialist at Edgewood High School, and she's working on a internship as part of her PhD program at Indiana State University. So I invited Alicia to join us tonight. We want to share with you tonight an additional way that we see RBB and the town council, the community, and local businesses of partnering together. Jamie is, as I mentioned, is living with us tonight. She is going to be sharing with you about our Ready Schools initiative. And while you're listening to her presentation, I want you to think how many, how many ways that you can partner with RBB through the Ready Schools initiative. Jamie, I'll let you go ahead and get started.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So just in case you want to adjust your settings accordingly so that you can see that, we just have a short slide presentation we want to share with you here. And I'm also happy to share this with Sandy after the fact. There's a lot of information. So if you happen to be someone who's presented, this is more new to you and you want to revisit the presentation, I'm happy to pass that along with you. So as, as you all know, we have students really from preschool all the way up through high school now. So PK-12 versus K-12. And we have the, the really great fortune to have schools positioned in a way that vertical alignment is just a natural transition for us. So a big part of Ready Schools is aligning each of our schools so that the work that we're doing to prepare our students for post-graduation success, whether that's in the form of a career or college readiness, that's truly happening as early as preschool, kindergarten, first grade. The skills that we're building in our graduates isn't something that just happens once students get to high school. But we're really building out a progression of skills from each of our schools beginning, at the very beginning, at the early childhood center. So that's something that's really unique about our district, that we're able to align so easily vertically in a natural way there. So for some quick background, if this is a newer topic or presentation to you, our work in STEAM education really began out of a partnership with the Redevelopment Commission back in 2015. And honestly, before that, in the planning phases, where we saw a need that I'll get a little more into here in a moment with some of the regional data, a need to prepare our students specifically for STEM-based careers from the trades and roles that students may enter directly from high school all the way up through even post-four-year degree positions. But in every aspect, the STEM careers and the STEM industries were what we're growing. So through this partnership, we've been able to put full-time instructional coaches in place in the schools. We've trained at one point over 60% of our teachers district-wide in project-based learning and just really changing the entire paradigm of how we're approaching both teaching and learning in our schools. And you can see some details there and just curricular changes and really instructional changes to how we do school at Edgewood to meet the needs and the ongoing evolving needs of the workforce that we're preparing our students for. And that progression brought us up to Ready Schools, which about a year ago, we planned, started planning and started in a discovery process to gather information from all of our stakeholders, from students, parents, community members, employers, trying to gather as much information and feedback from our community as we could after nearly five years of this initiative so that we could verify and ensure that what we're doing, we're not just changing instruction and we're not just making decisions based on what we think is best or based on best practices, but that we're actually doing what our community needs and we're actually preparing our students for the roles that they can enter after graduation right here in our community. We don't want to prepare them for roles that require them to leave and move to other parts of the country. We want to prepare them for roles that they can be retained here in our region and contribute to the economic welfare of our region. So this is the data that I alluded to. As a comparison, the blue graph that you see is what one particular class of Edgewood graduates elected to go into after graduation, whether they entered a trade school, a two-year program, or a four-year program, if they went the college route. These were the fields, the programs, or content areas that students were going into. Arts, humanities, health, and from there STEM business trades on down. Versus in the red, you see the overall average of a statewide comparison of students entering similar programs, whether that's a trade school, a two-year program, or a four-year program. So our students weren't electing to enter these same careers that were the fastest-growing industries. So there was a disconnect somewhere in how we're preparing our students to be employable post-college graduation, again, regardless of the level of what that college looked like. So enter Ready Schools. So with the partnership with ROI, with Regional Opportunity Initiative, we were able to delve into this discovery process to find that while in our region, dubbed the Indiana Uplands, there was a 4% job growth at the time when we began this process. Those three key sectors that you see there, life sciences, defense, and advanced manufacturing, in those three sectors, our job growth in our region matched the statewide growth almost. So there was a much higher opportunity for students to become employed if they were entering one of these three growing sectors. So these are three of the biggest employment industries in our region. And it's a 15-county region here in southwest, central Indiana. So everything we've been doing as a school district has been to try to start moving in a direction where we're aligning our strategies and our programs to prepare our students not only for careers in these fields, but to just broaden awareness and make sure that we're not necessarily telling our students to go into these fields, but we're making them as aware as they possibly can and their families as well for the jobs that are awaiting them after graduation. So this is just a little glimpse and overview of how our plan came to fruition. So we were finishing this discovery process right as COVID came to be. And the core tenants that you see on the side in the gray are just the core goals or objectives of the initiative that all students, as a result of this program, would be engaged in a relevant pathway to success, that we can ensure that every student is graduating high school either prepared for a post-secondary program, again, a four-year, two-year program, trade school, anything like that, or they're prepared to enter a career. But whatever their choice is, that they're equipped for a plan, essentially that they have a plan that they can intentionally pursue after graduation. They're not waiting until after they graduate high school to identify a pathway and decide what they want to do with their life. So we organized this plan of strategies that we identified as the best way to prepare our students into these three pillars. Innovative teaching and learning, career awareness, and family and community engagement. So I'll just give you a few examples of some of the strategies that we have been able to implement this school year and begin rolling out and begin developing despite all of the obvious COVID restrictions. So at the center of this whole plan, this document is, was a labor of love. This was something that we toiled over every word on this profile, and it will hopefully really be the center focal point of this plan, this profile of what an Edgewood graduate looks like. So these six types of skills are what we're going to build every one of these strategies toward. This is our end game, so to speak, that every Edgewood graduate would be a critical thinker, that they would be innovative, curious, and really courageous in how they learn and how they train, that they will have a collaborative nature, strong communication skills, be resilient in the face of years like this, if ever there was one, and just truly be a compassionate, empathetic citizen in our community, all of which are skills that are not only going to prepare them to be great employees, but just great citizens of our community. So every one of these strategies that I tell you a little more about in each of these pillars will hopefully be just one way that we're catalyzing that skill development in each of our students, again, from kindergarten all the way through high school. So one of the things that we identified was that we have to pour into our teachers, just like we are our students, and equip them with the skills and the knowledge that they need to be able to support students. We have teachers in our district that don't know enough themselves about what this world looks like that they're preparing them for. They can't prepare students to enter a biomedical career if they don't know what that looks like. So professional learning communities is a model of how we're using cyclical teaching and learning to continue to revisit and reflect and iterate on our own practices as teachers so that our teachers are continuing to learn and evolve and improve, just like the students. This is a panoramic picture of the new STEAM lab at the junior high. So this is our latest construction project, just finishing up. This will be a digital fabrication lab where the tiled portion on the left, you can see, will have a little bit more of a classroom feel, but still in a very dynamic way, where we'll have modular collaborative furniture and modular seating and work tables that can be moved. There's a garage door that separates these two spaces so that students can move fluidly between the space on the left where they'll be doing digital design, 3D printing, what we refer to as cleaner ways of fabricating. And then on the right, it'll be more of a messy space, a little more akin to what you would have envisioned in a shop class years ago, but with the high-tech element overlaid. So a CNC router, laser cutter, typical hand tools as well, and stronghold, work benches in the middle, and all sorts of other digital fabrication equipment around the edges. So we're really excited to bring this space to life as a way for, with the foundation of project-based learning that we've put in place, to really take things to the next level, so to speak, where our students aren't just prototyping with cardboard and masking tape anymore, but they actually have the tools to bring their designs to fruition, really approach problems in their community and problems in their school with the tools to create really authentic, real-world products. So this is kind of an overview then of the next space to come at the high school, the Innovative Learning Center. We'll have very similar spaces, but just a little bit larger and a little bit more enhanced. We'll have audio/video equipment there as well, a digital video lab, an audio booth, and then a career readiness center in the bottom left. You can see this is a space that we're really excited about from the community engagement aspect. So the groups like this, if we could host a meeting, if we were able to eventually have you all here to use this space for other community entities to use this space so that our students can be witness to the professional development that some of our community partners host or can be the ones videotaping different types of meetings and bringing those to live feeds. All of these spaces are going to be set up so that our students have real-world, authentic experiences, whether that means they're learning to use a CNC router, or they're learning to create a live broadcast, or they're just delivering their own maybe present, career presentation about an internship that they've done. In every situation, it's not about the tangible product that they're sharing. It's not about learning how to use a router or how to use a 3D printer, but it's those soft skills on that graduate profile that we're hoping to develop in our students so that they leave with a confidence and a readiness that they feel like they can enter a post-secondary institution or a career with real-world experience at their hands. So these are just a few more examples of the ways that our students are already outgrowing the equipment that we have in all the best ways. So we're using, where we're using a green sheet on a wall and, you know, an iPad as a camera. Now, pretty soon, we'll be able to outfit an actual audio/video studio this semester at our junior high and then next year at our high school so that our kids can just continue to grow and continue to evolve and our learning spaces can grow and evolve with them. So we're really excited about some of these partnerships with partners like WTIU that are supporting this growth. And here are a few pictures that are informing the construction work in our media centers. We're doing a little bit of an overhaul in each of our media centers. So I like to say where it's a puppet theater at the primary level, it's a digital presentation at the high school level. And in each of our media centers, we're just putting the tools and the spaces in place so that our students can practice presenting. They can practice collaborating. They can practice thinking critically about the world around them. They're not practicing to be able to change their world. One day, they're actually practicing to do so right now. And then the second pillar is focused really on taking all of those strategies and all of those tangible spaces that I just showed you and being intentional about what that looks like for career awareness in particular. So not just innovative learning in our classrooms, but how can we get our students out in the community so that they're exploring different careers, so that they know what their options are, and then so that from there, they can prepare and actually train for roles in those positions. We can't expect them to dream. We can't expect them to envision themselves in roles that they don't know exist. So whether that's working on a robotics team or it's attending a mock interview day, we want to give them experiences and as many of them as we can, beginning again all the way in the elementary grades up through high school so that we can just continue to overlay additional experiences so that when they're in positions within the organizations that you all serve in, they come with an awareness and a confidence that that's where they, they want to be and want to serve. So just a few more examples of some of the ways that we've had to pivot in the face of COVID, where we would have hosted an eighth-grade open house of sorts. Now we're supporting our students in creating course videos that we'll be able to broadcast on our website and we'll be able to reuse for years to come to show them what different high school courses look like. So thanks to COVID, we have resources and assets that we can use and share out that don't have to just be contained to a one-time live in-person event. Now we're creating videos and the kids are creating and editing videos to showcase the different offerings that we have. Same thing with digital portfolios and things like that. They're going to have artifacts now, moving forward, whereas they may have given an in-person presentation in the past. Now they're giving video presentations. They're doing exactly what I'm doing. They're creating digital portfolios where they're amassing these artifacts to continue growing and showing the course and progression of their learning. And one of the last things to share, a really exciting piece that has come from Ready Schools at our high school, we're going to be remodeling the media center to include a working coffee shop. So this is something that, at first glance, you think, what does this have to do with career awareness or preparing our students for the future? But this will be an entirely student-run enterprise. We visited a lot of different districts last year that have different student-run design shops or fabrication shops. And something that emerged from the students was they really want an inviting space where they can hang out and work and study. And it emerged as our possible student-run enterprise. And we've continued to research and develop this idea where our business courses can develop the business plan, our fax courses can design menus and nutritional options, our art courses can remodel and design and plan for the space in a truly collaborative nature between our teachers, our students, and eventually they will have this revenue-building endeavor within our high school where not only will our students have an inviting space to hang out and engage and collaborate right within the safe space of the media center, but they'll be able to use that revenue to continue growing, whether it's the Innovative Learning Center or other endeavors. They'll be practicing real-world skills where they're accountable to a team and they're accountable to a bottom line in the service industry that we can build. So this is a really exciting element of the plan that has been a fun discussion piece and a fun focal point of our high school layer of Ready Schools. So, and of course, the third pillar is more straightforward, just the communication piece. This is something that came out of stakeholder feedback in a really strong way, was just the connectivity with families and schools as the most essential piece to supporting our students. We can't prepare them in ways that their parents don't already know. We have to first start with families and parents as far as informing them of post-graduation options and opportunities. So we want to be as intentional about informing our parents and guardians and family members as we are about informing our students of all of these happenings and opportunities. So that partnership involves families as well as community members and industry partners. We can't do this alone. We will be the first to tell anyone that. So we're looking to industry partners to really bring that layer of authenticity to these different ideas and different strategies so that we can connect our students with the, with the employers and with the individuals that serve in these types of roles that they may be preparing for and exploring and believing that they want to pursue after graduation. So there are a lot of different ways that we're approaching our industry partners and community members, always looking for their inputs and their feedback in how we go about preparing our students to make sure that we're equipping them with the skills and the knowledge that they need to be successful. So just a few of those communication strategies and examples of ways that we're partnering with anyone that may be listening to this presentation and just seeking, again, feedback and mentorship and constant just interaction and collaboration with members of our workforce. So with that, if anyone has any questions, it was a lot. I apologize for speaking quickly, but I want to make sure to share all of that. And then I'm happy to answer questions as needed.
And before you get to your questions, just want to make sure that, that our purpose in sharing with you tonight is to make you an informed and active partner. We don't want it to just end with somebody thinking, oh, that's a cool idea, cool, some cool activities that they're doing within the four walls of one of our schools. We want you to see this as a community engagement where the community and, and people who lead our community through the town council, through the Chamber of Commerce, that you're fully informed about what Ready Schools is all about. We hope that we will be able to come back and, and break this down a little bit more specific as we move forward. We want our businesses to be partners. We've met with some already, Smithville and Cook Medical. And we're presenting to the Ellisville Chamber of Commerce on Thursday because we see this as really as a community-wide effort that will impact the Ellisville area for many years to come. So once again, thank you for being here. And, and as Jamie said, we are definitely open to any questions you might have.
Thank you, guys. That was a very, very outstanding presentation. Are there any council questions? Seeing none, are there public questions for either Dr. Sanders or Ms. Miller? Sandy, you'll have to help me out because my view is kind of isolated right now.
If, as, as, I know that was a lot to take in. So down the road, if you have any questions or you have some ideas that would maybe sparked and you want to think about that, please contact me. I would be glad to respond to an email, telephone call, or certainly a meeting in my office. And if you're a business, we would certainly love to come and do a presentation and to the key partners in your particular business. So once again, that was a lot to throw at you. I hope you're excited as we are. And I hope we can be invited back sometime in the future.
You are welcome whenever you'd like to come, sir. Okay, moving along from that, Sandy, we're down to resolutions now, correct? Just want to make sure I'm keeping up here. All right, resolution 032021, transferring funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund.
Yes, you had mentioned earlier that you'd like to do a transfer, and we're allowed to transfer 10% of our unspent appropriations at the end of the 2020. So that was $36,352.52. So this resolution transfers those funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund to be preserved for emergencies.
Okay. Counsel comments, questions about this? And seeing none. Is there a motion concerning this?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 03-2021, transferring funds from the general fund to the rainy day fund.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis? Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries. Also, Scott, I said yes, that the resolution was the next thing on the agenda, but I did add the proclamation, the annual proclamation for Tri-CAP a week.
I'm sorry, I don't have that one on my sheet that I printed off here. So can you help me out with that, please?
Well, the Tri-CAP asks us every year to make a proclamation that it is Tri-CAP a week celebration from February 22nd through the 28th. And it's just making people aware of what they do for our community. And so if there's anything else you'd like to know, I'd be glad to answer.
No, I can see part of it right now. Counsel, do you have any questions or any comments about this?
No.
Okay, so, again, Sandy, I apologize, the way my computer's set up, I can only read part of it right now. So rather than spending the time to read this all into the rec, can you publicize this on the town's website? Is that all right? That's sufficient, or how do you want to do this?
Well, I can try. I've not gotten real good at that yet, but I will give it a try.
Okay. Well, we, again, like to thank TRICAPA for all they do for the community, and apologize, this is a little bit clunky this year, but Zoom is not really wanting to cooperate with me tonight to read this whole thing. So congratulate them on everything they've done and continue to do for us, and we will denote February 22nd through the 28th as TRICAPA Week in Ellisville. Now moving to resolutions, resolution 032021, transferring funds from general fund to the rainy day fund.
And we completed that one.
You're right, we did. I apologize. There are no ordinances on first reading, no ordinance on second, no where there's our old business, there's nothing listed on the flood report, so now we're down to new business with the police department request to move Officer Jason Brown from part-time to full-time. Marshall?
Yes, sir. Good evening to all. I want to bring before you tonight, Jason Brown. I want to first give him just a little chance to say a little something there. Jason, go ahead and, and talk to the board here for just a minute, if you would.
Hey, I'm Jason Brown, as you can see. Just glad to be a part of the department. I mean, I'm from Ellisville, I've lived here my whole life. My dad's Jay Brown, if you guys didn't know that. So obviously a big Ellisville family, and just love to be around, love to be a part of it more than I already was. So just like say thank you, mainly, I guess.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate that. As I told you, in November, Jason completed his Indiana law enforcement training at IU. He came to us the 1st of December, and he's just about, he's well over halfway in his field training at this time. We are wanting to put him full-time, move him to full-time, and probably sometime in March, early April, we'll move him to where he'll be working a shift by himself, or could work a shift by himself. But that would be up to his field training officers, as a couple of you know that. But anyway, I'd like to recommend that Jason be moved from part-time to full-time, if you would, please. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, are there questions? Is there a motion from the council concerning this?
I move, we move Jason Brown from part-time to full-time police officer.
Second.
And is there a motion, a second, whenever you're ready?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Jason.
I didn't indicate to you, but through the reassignment of Jason, I'm sorry, Jared Myers, that left a full-time opening for us, and that's where, that's where he'll be filling. So thank you so much, I appreciate your support. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you all.
Next order of business, fire department request to move firefighter Taylor Mauder from part-time to full-time. Is that correct, chief?
Well, it's actually, he's going from full-time to part-time.
Okay.
It was a mistake on the original agenda, and the corrected one is the full-time and part-time. Firefighter Tyler Mauder has a conditional unemployment offer with the city of Bloomington as a firefighter, and so position to be opening up, but he doesn't want to stay on his part-time. So I'll make a recommendation that the town council allow Tyler Mauder transfer from full-time to part-time pending his hiring at the city of Bloomington.
So based on your email today, can I suggest a modification to this?
Yes.
That we give you the authority to shift him from full-time to part-time as you see fit, based upon the conditions in your email?
Okay, I would appreciate that, that'd be just fine.
So again, for the rest of the council, if I can make an amendment, as I stated, that we would now delegate the authority to Chief Corman to move him from full-time to part-time as he sees fit at the time of his determination. Again, based on the factors in the email, since this is a personnel issue, we won't get further into that, but that would be my request for the modification here. So in fact, I'll make that the motion.
Second.
Sandy?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And the next is Department of Public Works request to hire two full-time laborer two.
Hello, this is Michael Farmer. Yes, actually, the first hire is actually a transfer from temporary full-time to regular full-time. Donovan Wright, he's been working for us since August 11th, 2020, and we'd like to move him into a labor two position, a regular full-time, and his wage will go from $16.50 to $18 an hour, and he does have a CDL permit, so he's working on getting a CDL, which probably will lead to a promotion to labor one. So I, the other position tabling for tonight, I'm still working on who to hire for that position, but I would like permission to transfer Donovan Wright from temporary full-time to regular full-time labor two.
Counsel questions? And seeing none, is there a motion?
I request that Department of Public Works request to hire, so it's just one, right, Mike?
Yes, it's just one.
Just one full-time laborer two.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis? Or, I'm sorry, Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council, not as part of our normal agenda. Seeing no one that appears on my screen, sorry, Sandy, go ahead.
No, I was just clicking off of something. I'm good.
Since there seems to be no one with privilege of the floor, move to supervisor comments.
I'd like to go first. This is Michael Farmer. First of all, during the flood report, I should have spoke up. We do have a progress report that I'll send to all the board members and would be available to the public if anybody has a request for it. Basically, they're still working on the flood report, they're working on wetland delineation, the geotechnical part of the flood, the flood documents that have to be done before we can actually start work. You've probably seen crews in town surveying around the bridges, and once the surveying's done, they'll be, begin the design documents, and so there is movement and they are progressing. So also, we have started demolition of the building on Vine Street, the last building on Vine Street, that will be necessary before we actually do any work in and around the creek. So we found somebody that repurposed, is repurposing the, the structure, the roof structure and the materials, and they also are taking the overhead doors. So we're kind of glad to see somebody take that part of the building and repurpose it. As soon as they're removed, we'll knock the building down probably almost immediately. So that should happen sometime in the next week or so. Besides that, crews are working in the weather, and so kudos to utilities and street department. I'm sure the street department's out right now, and so I always want to give a shout-out to the crews, they're doing really good work in pretty harsh weather conditions, and the general public needs to be aware of their households and make sure their vents are closed, outside vents are closed, and any unprotected pipes, make sure you try to protect them best you can and keep your house heated. And if you have a waterline break in your house, we're open 24 hours a day, you can call the water office, and we have after-hours service, and we'll be out to shut your water off. So other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mike. Chief Corman, do you want to talk about the warming stations real quick?
Yes, I do. The fire department was contacted by the Monroe County Emergency Manager Director Allison Moore, and a group effort between all the fire departments and the city of fire stations in the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, we're working together to put together a warming station, and basically the fire station in Ellisville, the conference room can be used as a warming station. People just notify us, they need to come in and warm up for a little while, that will be provided. So that runs starting today until February 23rd.
Yeah, that's 24/7 open, right?
Yes, it is.
All right, is there other supervisor comments? I'm sorry, I can't interrupt.
Mr. President, I'd like to also, Mike, Mike mentioned it, but in looking at our staffs over the weekend, I don't think we had one accident in the Ellisville area. I think that says a lot with Kip and Danny and their crew to get out and solve these roads and make, make it safe for our people to travel. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I really appreciate what they do. We coordinate with them as far as our late officers, and they can call them direct and get them right out. So it's a real good working relationship we have with them, but thank you to the street department and those people from utilities that come out and plow those roads for us. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great, great point. They do a fantastic job every year, and it sometimes goes, or feels like it goes unnoticed, but it's, it's not, it's really not.
It is not.
Other supervisors?
Okay, seeing none, we'll go down to council comments.
I have something I'm going to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandy, could you see about setting up electronic signatures? I think it would make it a lot easier, because I know some people work it as hard for them to get up there, why we're at least doing this online.
Yes, I, that's something I will try to accomplish. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Pam. I mean, quite frankly, if we're going to do meetings via Zoom, I think we should think about doing the signatures electronically as well. Other council comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Whenever you're ready, Sandy.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis? I'm sorry, Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned at 7:14.
Thank you all, have a good evening.